I've been meeting in the Conestoga Valley. I was doing so well for a while. The Conestoga Valley School Board, I'd like to welcome all of you that are here this evening as well as those that are joining us online. We're going to start with the pledge of the flag. I have no announcements. I pledge the pious flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Martin, may we have attendance, please?
We have nine school directors present tonight. We have a quorum in place.
Okay, thank you. This is our work session, the first of two meetings this month, in which we receive most of the informational presentations as well as discuss and deliberate future decisions, official actions or directives. There may also be some action voting issues required on timely issues or to meet time-restrained guidelines. Our meetings observe all legal and policy requirements to the best of our understanding and ability, and all agendas are available along with related public documents posted on our website. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, the superintendent's report was updated to reflect a resignation of a new hire scheduled for approval this evening. Section 1, Item I, has a strike-through to indicate no approval of this appointment.
Is that it? Any others? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? If not, the agenda is approved. Superintendent comments. Dr. Hartman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have quite a large report tonight. I guess that's the consequence of only having one meeting in July. There's a lot to catch up on. So first and foremost, just want to give a brief update on our status as we get ready to open up the school year. Last week was an exciting week here. We had all of our new teachers in for new teacher induction. Administratively, that's always a little bit of a wake-up call for us when we see all of those new teachers come in. It's sort of a sign that summer is coming to an end and we better get all of those last-minute things checked off our to-do list. But it was a great week. We have a great group of new teachers and staff members coming in this year and excited to start the school year. As most of you are aware, next week, 18th to 19th, is Teacher in Service with students returning on the 20th. So we're back in beginning-of-the-year mode and I think we're ready to go. So things are starting to come together. Also, just wanted to make a quick comment to the public and to the school board. There's a lot of news out there right now and a lot of reporting on the status of the state budget and where we're at with that. And as most people are well aware, the state doesn't have a past budget yet. And the implications for school districts, I did share some information via email with the school board last week. I just wanted to make a public comment. I think we're in a really strong position financially as a district. We feel that some of the delay in the state budget and some of the things that have been reported about delays and funding being released to schools, that's not having an immediate impact on us. We're not in a situation where we're now looking at immediately dipping into our reserve or not starting certain programs to start the school year. We feel that we can kind of weather that until we get the reimbursement from the state whenever the state finally passes a budget. So that's not uncommon when we get in these situations, but we have a good financial plan in place to get us through. One other announcement, and this is on a positive note, I want to give a congratulations and we're super excited for this announcement. For Dr. Aloisa and Leola Elementary School have been selected to participate in a pilot program by the AIM Institute, which is a really reputable organization out there. But the pilot focuses on early reading success for the school year. And Leola was one of 10 schools in the entire country to be selected to participate in this pilot. And what it involves is, through the application process, is that it was very competitive. And the teachers and staff members of Leola will receive a lot of professional development in the area of early reading success. They'll be provided coaching, professional development, and resources for kindergarten and then first grade to really focus. It's part of a research project that AIM Institute's doing. But we get to benefit from all of the free professional development we'll get for it. So there'll be more information to come on this and certainly it'll be on a future board agenda to discuss in more detail, but we wanted to share that exciting news with everybody. And then finally, last but not least, we have quite a few buckskins, new buckskins I'd like to introduce this evening. Our first couple of introductions were for new staff members who were approved at a previous board meeting but were only able to attend tonight. So first, I'd like to introduce Emma Schaefer. Do you want to stand and wait? Emma's going to be our new life skills teacher at Fritz. She recently graduated from Lancaster Bible College with a BA in Biblical Studies, a BS in Early Childhood Education, and a Master's in Special Education. She is not completely new to us. One of her student teaching placements was right here at CV at Smoketown Elementary School in the last year. So we're happy to have you join us full-time. So welcome, Emma. Next is Daniel Adams. Daniel's in the back helping out with tech support tonight. Daniel is our new network support specialist. So he has over six years' experience in network administration. He's a Cisco Certified Network Associate and a Cisco Meraki Solution Specialist. Most recently, he has worked in IT administration and network support for the Rutter's Corporation. So welcome, Daniel. Glad to have you. Next, we have Wesley Maloney. Wesley? Wesley will be a long-term substitute for science at the middle school. Wesley has been a science teacher since 2021 at Academia Partnership Charter School in Lancaster. He also works as a percussion instructor for the band program at Penn Manor School District. He is certified in both Social Studies and General Science and received his bachelor's in secondary education from Millersville. Welcome, Wesley. Madison Algier. Madison, are you here? Madison will be our art long-term substitute at the middle school. Madison recently completed her student teaching in Eastern York School District and the Kocalico School District. She has her bachelor's degree in art education from Millersville. Prior to getting into education, Madison received her associate's degree in art and design from Harrisburg Area Community College and worked in various jobs in the art and design fields before going back and getting her teaching certificate. Welcome, Madison. Next, we have Jessica Molinaro. Jessica, are you here? Jessica will be our new school psychologist with her initial assignment being at Brownstown in Leola. Jessica has been a school psychologist for 22 years, working both with Intermediate Unit 12 and the Central York School District. She has her bachelor's degree in psychology from Penn State, her master's in school psychology from Millersville University, and is a board-certified assistant behavior analyst through Penn State. Thanks, Jessica. Next, we have Celeste Nazario. Celeste will be a first-grade teacher at Leola. Celeste completed her bachelor's in Early Childhood Education at Millersville in 2023 while working as a paraprofessional in the Peckway Valley School District. Since receiving her teaching certificate, she has served as a long-term substitute with the Mannheim Township School District, and now we're excited to welcome her here. Thanks, Celeste. Next is a face that might be familiar to many of us in the room, Diana Catrona. Diana has been serving as a support staff substitute with CV since 2022 and is a very actively involved parent in the district, so many of you may know her. Prior to serving as a substitute, she actually served as a school counselor for a period of time with the Oxford School District. She has a bachelor's degree in social work from Juniata College and a master's in school counseling from Westchester. And she's going to be joining us at the high school as our attendance administrative assistant moving forward. Good to see you here, Diana. And finally, last but not least, I'd like to introduce Mr. Frank Hawkins as our new athletic director at CV. So welcome, Frank. Frank has been an athletic director for 10 years, first serving as the AD at West York from 2015 to 2020, and most recently, serving as the athletic director at Donegal since 2020. He is a Navy veteran and holds a bachelor's degree in business management from the University of Phoenix. He is a certified master athletic administrator through the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association and is actively involved with the NIAA and is part of the Pennsylvania School Athletic Directors Association's faculty for facilitating leadership training courses. He has previously been recognized as the York Adams Interscholastic Athletic Director of the Year, the Lancaster Lebanon League Athletic Director of the Year, the Pennsylvania State Athletic Director Association Region 5 Athletic Director of the Year, and the PIAA District 3 Athletic Director of the Year. That's a mouthful. We are happy to have that expertise with us here at CV. Welcome, Frank. So that concludes my report for this evening.
Welcome, all of you. I'm going to add one recognition that Dr. Hartman didn't mention. That is that he and Mel Upden, the director of our CVVA, will be presenting next month at a convention, which is the result of Rachel Mann, who came, he gave a presentation to our faculty, and was so impressed with how CV had started its AI program that she asked them to present with them. So not only will they be taking what we have learned, but hopefully they'll get a chance to learn from a lot of other schools how they're all handling AI. Are there any other board comments on district activities? If not, then we'll start right away with presentations from Doctors Mann, Cozer, and Fox.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So this is our time of year where we like to share with the school board our plans for our Title I school-wide plans. So just some business on this side of things. There are four of our schools who need to write school-wide plans each year based on their data as part of our federal funding for Title I. And then this year, we have the high school at the table as well. They are writing a school-wide plan for a recent TSI designation that Dr. Mann will walk you through. The only plan that actually needs board approval is the high school plan. So I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on the other plans so that you can see how they connect to the comprehensive plan. You can see the direction we're headed. Then we'll talk about the high school's plan, and then that is the plan that we'll be asking for board approval next week. So a little bit of the logistics on that side. So when we are working with our school-wide plans, the first thing that we always do is line up our goals of our comprehensive plan. As the board knows, we are constantly putting these three big buckets in front of all of our principals, our teachers, our staff, as much as we can because we know that this is what drives the work that we're doing for these three years of our comprehensive plan. And then we take a look at our data. We take a look at the PSSA data that just came in in June. You know, we get our PVAS data a little bit later, so we're kind of looking at a year behind on PVAS and some of our other internal data sources. And from there, we really create priorities for each school. What are those initiatives that we know are going to be high-leverage, evidence-based, that are really going to help move the direction of each of our schools? But we're always lining up, too, these big initiatives in the comprehensive plan. We also know that Pennsylvania has given us a blueprint for what works in schools. And so that's called these essential practices. They've outlined 18 things that if schools are doing these things, they are the proven, tried-and-true, demonstrated practices that if you are hitting all of these things, they're at the operational level, you can pretty much be guaranteed that your student achievement and growth data is going to be going in the direction you want. So we have kind of the blueprint for the things that we need to be putting in place in our buildings. So when you see the high school's plan, you'll see these practices and our self-assessment of where they are. From those 18 practices, then, we identify the ones that are our priority focus in those school-wide plans. So just to give you an overview, one place where you can see all of those practices that we've prioritized for this year. Within the elementaries this year, all of our buildings who are working with a school-wide plan, so that's Fritz, Leola, and Smoketown. Brownstown, as you know, does not receive Title I funds, and they don't have to write a school-wide plan, but Mr. Ludwig is very, very closely involved with the other three elementary principals. So we have set these as priorities across the four schools. We're really moving into our assessments. As you know, we've been looking at revising our elementary progress report. We'll be sharing that with the board next month, so you can see the work that we've been doing there. But utilizing formative assessment to inform progress to parents is a really big priority for us at elementary. Focusing on our instructional practices, continuing to implement PBIS as part of that positive school environment. And then you know, you have heard those four letters, MTSS. It continues to be a focus. This is year five going into really building out our MTSS framework. That continues to be a priority at the elementary level. The middle school, then, because we really have been working closely as a K-8 system, the middle school has lined up their priority practices, those essential practices to the elementaries as well. So as we continue to build those initiatives from the elementary up, the middle school now is continuing on in some of the work that we've been doing with our curriculum and our assessments. And then the high school, Dr. Fox and Dr. Mann, we'll talk to you a little bit more about those similar practices, but there's just a couple of differences because we're really particularly focusing on students with IEPs at the high school as part of their plan. So that's a one-slide summary of the priority areas across the K-12 system.
To put it in simple terms, as we begin this process, you know, we talked about the curriculum. So at the high school, we're focusing on creating an instructional culture, which we have. However, we need to be working on that more. MTSS, focusing on data and making informed decisions around data. Again, continuing with that, we had a meeting today, just today, and keep preparing for what's coming next. And then meeting every learner where they are, as they are, as it says there. Making sure that we are individualizing our instruction based on our students' needs and putting together the appropriate plans, support plans, that they need to be successful and then make sure that the resources and the staff are all on the same page with that. Again, that's being born out of MTSS as well. You can see a lot of that. And so just kind of to give a little idea of what TSI is, the state has a early warning system that is through the federal government. It gives us a red flag, the metric that's behind there. And so this is just a slight red flag for the high school, so identifying an area that we need to be focusing on. They will identify anywhere where there's one subgroup or more. So the high school has one, and we're focusing on students with disabilities, graduation rate, achievement, growth, and attendance are the focal areas. And Dr. Fox will talk about those in a few minutes. It's an annual designation, so every year, you know, you can come off it or stay on it, but it's an annual piece to it. And that the district-wide school plan is to identify that subgroup and work with them and take them through. So a lot of what Dr. Fox will show you is what work has been done up to now and what will come afterwards as far as identifying these kids and then working with them. And just to point out, because you'll hit me if I don't, this is not Title I.
Nothing to do with Title I.
Nothing to do with Title I.
Just to add to that, as Dr. Fox shares more, keep in mind, remember, our middle school had a TSI designation two years. We put our plans in place, we used the evidence-based practices, and they did not receive that designation then last year. And so we know that this planning process really works, this early warning system. Hey, take a look at this group, put some special plans in place, and we've seen success with this process through the middle school.
So we have really used this plan as an overall kind of call to action with kind of four areas that we were identified for. So we looked at how we look at achievement across students with disabilities, growth on our different assessments that we have at the state level for keystones, graduation requirements, as well as attendance goals. So using the areas of identification to drive us forward with where we're going with the plan. The next slide will talk you a little bit through some of our action steps that we have across the different pieces that we kind of see, really based in those practices. So when we think about the students with disabilities, we came together last year, right around January, and met as a full district team and really planned out what our year is going to look like, what are things that we're going to be able to implement. And that's kind of summarized on the next slide here. So if we go to the next slide, what we really did is we kind of came together and we looked at kind of four areas of those essential practices and applied it to curriculum, instruction, assessment, and organization. And from kind of the 20,000-foot view is where we're looking at a curriculum, kind of like we're doing K-8. We're also implementing different practices within the classroom, tier-one support, as well as co-teaching with some of our classes for students that might have extra support needed. And then when we transition to assessment and organization, we're really looking at different ways that we're using assessments in classes, statewide-level assessments like the CDT, and then really looking at how we're organizing our groups. So we're looking at the MTSS plan, the MTSS network, but also ways that we identify students that might have barriers such as attendance, maybe academic needs, and really addressing those. So really using the practices as our baseline, driving that forward with a lot of our action plans. So the bulleted list is really kind of what we're going down to when we talk about some of our actions.
Okay, and so what does this look like at the high school, the systems we put in place? Dr. Fox will be meeting with his building team quarterly. We've got 90-day action plans that they'll be putting in place, checking in on a regular basis to make sure that we're doing what we set out to do in this TSI plan. And then also using our CDT assessments at the high school to do a quarterly data check-in to make sure that we're hitting those interim goals toward the big data goals you saw a couple of slides before. We'll be providing you, just like we did with the middle school, mid-year, we'll give you an update on the status of the TSI plan and how things are going. And then also lining up our teacher effectiveness, our educator effectiveness plans and goals to that focus on students with disabilities within the high school. So what does this look like? It looks like tonight, you're getting to see this plan here, a little bit about it. Next week, we'll come back. We'll be here for any questions, anything that comes up for the board. But then we would be seeking board approval so that we can get this submitted through the state system by September 1. And then we have from September 1 to June of next school year to implement the action steps outlined in the plan. So that's our overview for this evening. You have the 24-page document in the board agenda. So again, look it over. Questions, feel free to email throughout the week or we can be back next Monday to answer any specific questions the board might have.
So are you saying we do have a TSI designation now?
Correct.
Confirm where what?
Yes, so it's our students with disabilities subgroup. And we were identified because of their Keystone scores, so that's the achievement part. Their growth data, that's the PVAS, the Value Added Assessment System, graduation rate, and attendance.
And that's over the entire kindergarten to 12?
Just the high school. Just the high school.
I have a question. Now, are you focusing on just kids with IEPs? Or can it be any of the kids who hit these criterias but don't have an IEP? Because parents can say no.
So these strategies that we're putting in place, when you look at those 18 essential practices, those are the practices that when they are anchored in your school, you're going to see all kids benefit from that. And so the strategies we're focusing on, co-teaching, Dr. Fox mentioned, that's great for our students with disabilities, but it's going to benefit every single student, even if they're not specifically identified. It's going to benefit every student in those classes. And so we picked some of the essential practices that we know will have a broader impact as well.
And as we continue to build out MTSS, we'll be identifying students, right, that need those and have an early warning system that, you know, allows us to identify them earlier and have a system in place to be able to track them and progress monitor that.
Yeah, because that's my concern. I don't want any kid falling through the cracks because they just missed. It should be 100% all the kids, so.
Yeah, and part of what Michelle's been working on with the MTS pilot is we're piloting a data tool to help that. And we're looking at two different tools to see which one gives us the best data and ease of use and how, you know, ease of use at administrative level and also at the classroom level. And so that's going to really help with us as an organization, keeping track of the students and then what we're doing for them throughout that time.
Are you required to identify individual students and track their data?
We are not required to do that. Certainly, when you're designated for a very specific subgroup of students, we want to make sure that our strategies are having an impact on that subgroup. And so what Don just described, the data system we'll have in place will allow us to check on that group specifically.
Last year, we did not have this, correct?
Correct. This is new for the high school, but we did for the middle school for several years, yes.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. It seemed like a lot of the information in here was from 2019 to 24, though.
Yeah.
Like, are they figuring all, are they taking into account all of that? Because some of them have said actually increased in proficiency from '23 to '24, '24 to '25, no, '23 to '24.
That's a great question, Phil.
Lagging indicator.
Right, so they take, what they do is, on the Future Ready PA Index site, which is like the state report card for the schools, they use that data every year to then look at all the high schools in the state of Pennsylvania. And they have a very specific formula for calculating if you're at this percentage of achievement and this growth with this attendance. They put all of that in and they get that information. That report card system, it is wild. Some things are from that school year, some are lagging indicators. Attendance, the attendance that we got designated on is from the '22-'23 school year. It is all over the place. So you got it. You got it.
I'm not trying to make excuses or anything by any means, but do you think any of this is? is related to COVID and the remote instruction and all that kind of stuff, or is this all pretty much after that, do you feel?
Right now, all the data coming through that report card system is two years out, three years out COVID. So, I think certainly there may still be some gaps, but I don't think it's the driver. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Then this will be in our consent agenda for next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the point in our agenda where anyone from the public who would like to address an item from the agenda is welcome. If not, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Hartman, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Nothing to add other than my comments from earlier. You'll notice there's, in addition to my superintendent's report, there's also day-to-day substitute list approval, coaching list, advisory list for the upcoming school year.
Is it approved?
Yeah.
Yes. Is that a motion?
I will move that we approve the superintendent's report.
Typically, it's on a consent agenda. That's why we don't usually have action discussion. But in August, we do, too, because we have new hires we need to get in for the school year.
I'm sorry.
We have a roll call to bid new hires, and we'll just get it.
Yes. Any other questions? If not, then we have a roll call, please.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Tally?
Aye.
Mrs. Kapka?
Aye.
Mr. Gensel?
Aye.
Mr. Eby?
Aye.
Ms. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mrs. Groff?
Aye.
Not mention unanimous. Administrative policy review. This never goes away.
Congratulations, everyone. You're official. Just a few comments. This is, these policies are just scheduled for a first reading at our next meeting. We're just giving them to the board in advance. These are a few policies that we wanted to bring to the board earlier, I believe, in June, and they sort of slipped through the cracks, so we're just scooping them up now. But they're ones that we shared out. I had shared with our policy committee with Julie and Diane earlier there, some PSBA recommendations, as well as one policy, Policy 336, personal necessity leave, which we have some recommended revisions, not because of PSBA recommendations, but for, they were some administrative recommendations we had because we thought some of the language was ambiguous and unclear, kind of, so. Don't have a lot of comments on them, other than they're there for your review. And certainly bring questions to first reading next week, and we're happy to answer any questions about those policies. But we're just doing some cleanup now from some of our series that were previously updated.
Could I ask a couple of questions on the front end here? On Policy 323, under authority, there are two areas, and usually when we have choices, we get those green Xs, so we know which ones we're accepting, and this has not.
We may have to go back and look at those. We may have missed that.
It talks about, one of them talks about designated areas, and the other talks about prohibiting tobacco products by employees at any time. And neither of those is checked.
We'll go back and look at that, and before first reading, we'll, yeah, that was one we must have, some of these, I always call it the choose-your-own-adventure when they give you the recommendations. You have to select one, and we're usually pretty good at getting those, but sometimes one slips by. So, we'll go back and talk about that as cabinet and make a recommendation.
Thank you. And there are two that have notes at the end. Will they be eliminated? There are notes to school districts if you have certain situations at the end of both 323 and 351. I assume that's not going to happen.
Yeah, that wouldn't become part of the policy.
That would be dropped out?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
I have a question on 805, emergency. Have I compared this? Page three. And this is about guidelines, emergency planning, education and training, page three. So, the first one is two hours of required training for any combination of one or more. So, these five things don't have to be trained on every year.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we have a cycle set up for what, and it's tracked.
And then, the next one, though, has me baffled. One hour of required training in the following areas shall be completed each year. And that's just training on how to do an emergency drill.
The, conducting the drills counts as the training for a lot of that.
So, the drill itself is not part of this?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Because I figured that one every month, that would be six minutes for a [inaudible].
Yeah, so there's a formula. So, much of that can count towards your required training, and I would say we probably are on the heavy end. We do more, we spend more time doing drills than what we're allowed to count as the hour.
And one hour is sort of like a state guideline?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
These administrative reviews go a lot better when we only have a few policies than when we have 30 or 40.
On, another one, on 317.1, this is basically just for certified district employees, because there's 317, which would be like all administrative professional support employees, but that doesn't go into near the detail that 317.1 goes into.
There's different requirements for certificated educators because the Pennsylvania Standards and Practice Commission only applies to certificated administrators, and there's certain reporting requirements for them, so if that makes...
So, it's more for the reporting?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're mandatory reporters for, if we hear of any type of abuse or misconduct with any employees, but there's certain, there's mandatory reporting that's through Child Protective Services and Department of Human Services, but there's various, but there's additional reporting requirements to Pennsylvania Standards and Practice Commission for educators. That only certificated educators fall under that commission, so I meant that this policy specifically addresses that, more or less.
Any other questions?
I have a lot of these, they have volume for 2024, but will that still be on the policy?
No, that...
No.
No, that's just where they come to us from PSBA.
That's the PNN newsletter release that gave us the updates. That's just so it's easier for me to track.
Thank you.
By having this administrative review, we get to see it exactly the way it comes to CV. Any other concerns yet? This will go quickly next week. Okay, next is the review of our next agenda. I will tell you, there's probably going to be in addition to that because those policies that I've been putting in front of you for the last three months that we have to go back to, I'm hoping to have on next week's agenda. There'll be one resolution for the shortened parliamentary procedure and a couple of policies where we've already expressed an interest in discussing. So, anyone from the public that would like to address the board on any issue? Yes, may we have your name, please?
This is Lisa Bartelt.
And you are a parent?
I'm a parent.
And you're speaking for just yourself?
Yep.
Okay, that gives you three minutes.
I just had some questions and wanted some clarification on the attendance policy email that went out earlier this week. Minutes matter, oh, sorry.
Sorry, okay. Hi, how's that feel? Okay, sorry, attendance policy email that went out earlier this week about minutes mattering and the attendance threshold. I needed some clarification and a little confused, so the email said whether a student arrives later, leaves early, the time missed will now be recorded as part of their daily attendance in power school. Is that any absentee, or any tardy, any like excused, unexcused for any kind of doctor's appointment, anything like that? We're counting the minutes now, if I am understanding this correctly. So, say, do you, if you have one, you know, appointment every month and it's 30 minutes, you add those up, eventually are you going to get like a half-day of your absences off? Like, it's very confusing to me the way that it's worded. And then, the next part of it says that the attendance threshold, to receive a full-day attendance, students must be present for more than 70% of the school day. That gives a two-hour window for any necessary late arrivals or early dismissals. Frankly, I'm just, I'm confused. Like, I get that we're probably trying to target, you know, tardies, late arrivals to school, but I don't know if there are any parents in the room who have trouble scheduling, you know, any kind of medical appointments before or after school. Like, it's almost impossible. And so, my concern is that if there is a student who is out there, you know, trying to take care of their mental health, maybe they have regular, you know, appointments that causes them to miss a little bit of school because they need it, like, is this going to negatively affect them in the long run because it's accumulating in a way that it wasn't previously? And, you know, if that is the case, you know, we do have students who receive school-based services, so those two things feel like they're maybe not weighted the same way. We have students that leave school early for sporting events. Does that count for, you know, this accumulation and things like that? So, I just have questions, wondered if there were clarifications. I know you won't answer me here, so, you know, if that can be clarified. And again, I feel like we maybe shouldn't shame parents for making appointments after or during the school day when, in this, like, day and age, you cannot get appointments that are not during the school day. So, thank you.
It's nice to know that people are reading what we send out. I have a feeling that her questions are the kind that often generate more questions as she has Michelle. I'm not sure who it would be that would be getting in touch with her to talk over this. But if you will make sure that the board secretary has your contact information, you will hear from us.
I would also appreciate, though, I feel like those are questions other people may have as well. So, as in a classroom setting, one is, you know, a student asks a question pertaining to everyone. It's good if everyone gets the answer. I don't feel like it was specific to my child, so while I will appreciate an answer, I do think it's valuable for the community as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything we can do to help with that request, or is it best that everyone...
We will talk as a team, and we'll follow up, and we'll see if this is, I mean, we do, when people have questions, they ask us. We get an influx of questions, so I'll have to defer my team and see if, in fact, this is something that we're getting, it's like how we develop FAQs, right? If you get the same question more than two or three times, we typically put out an FAQ on that. So, we'll talk, and definitely, I agree, clarify if what's one, good for one is good for all. So, if one person has the question, there's probably other people asking it, so we'll figure out the best way to get that out for you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, are there any board initiatives or announcements? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel documentation and staffing issues, and I will tell you that the board will be spending a little time afterwards, not necessarily in the executive session issue, but to review our future agendas. So, if I may have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.